I'll call this regular council meeting of the Village of Grammont and Order at 7:35 PM. I'm going to ask Councilor Wayne Sturgeon to open in prayer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we are truly thankful to be here in a place, Lord God, where we are truly blessed. And let us always remember that most people in this world would dearly love to have a worst day. God, we pray that you may give us each the patience of Solomon, I mean, the patience of Job and the wisdom of Solomon, Lord God, in making decisions that are good for the people. And we ask in Jesus' wonderful name. Amen.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick opening remarks tonight. The first one is when I looked back at the calendar in June and tried to figure out what happened, I think we all recognize the fact we had a number of ferry issues over the month of June. They always seem to come in waves, but I think there were three of them, so hopefully that is the lucky number and we can move on. I do want to give a shout out in particular to coastal transport in the province, particularly the second breakdown of the Adventure when it was laid up and the five was still at dry dock. There was a lot of behind the scenes work that went into getting the Adventure permission to run on one engine and then turning the five around quickly to come back on the run. I think between that and the potential gas shortage, we all realized really how precarious the supply chain issue is to Grammonan and just how little there is to go on by time. So I just want to give a shout out to all of them with all the hard work in getting that back up and running. And then because I declared conflict of interest, this is kind of a cool thing for me, but I want to say congratulations to this group around the table and the staff for all of the hard work about getting some work happening up in Northhead. Again, there was a lot of things that happened behind the scenes, and I appreciate the deputy mayor stepping in for me when I couldn't participate because of work conflicts, but it is really good to see that project up and started. So I know the CAO in particular put a lot of work into that. We have a lot of our staff that are up there on site, so it's just good to see that going so. Good work, everybody around the table. And with that, I will move on to disclosure of conflict of interest. Hearing none, I will move to adoption of the minutes. The first is the regular council meeting of June 2nd, and the second is the special meeting of June 30th. And I note one change in the special meeting minutes. The motion should say with public works, not public safety, just for clarity. And the clerk has made that change, but we didn't want to reprint the minutes for the one word.
Madam Mayor, with that correction being noted, I make a motion to accept the minutes as with the corrections as you noted.
You heard the motion from Councilor Sturgeon. Do we have a seconder?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Councilor Toll. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Additions to the agenda. I've got a couple of things. The first one is I'd like to move the planning advisory committee discussion into closed session because we're talking about personnel, and I think it's more appropriate to have that initial discussion at least in the closed session. We'd also like to add the Northhead Wharf project to closed session as well as the BGC expansion to closed session.
Please allow me.
BGC, Boys and Girls Club. And the first one would be under legal for the Northhead Wharf and then property for the BGC expansion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to make the changes to the agenda as you suggested.
You heard the motion from Councilor Sturgeon. Do we have a seconder?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Councilor Ballantyne. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. With that, I am going to declare conflict of interest on, it would be 19-3, the Northhead Wharf project. And with the deputy mayor not here, I am going to ask that you choose someone from amongst you to chair while I'm out of the room, if you'd like to do that now.
I nominate Councilor Philman Green to chair.
You heard the motion from Councilor Boyd. Do we have a seconder?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Councilor Toll. Question? All those in favor?
Oh, aye.
Contrary-minded? Doesn't matter, you're outvoted.
Are you actually a nay?
Philman?
Did I record that?
Are you actually a nay?
No.
We're just checking.
That's a nay, I can lie.
All right. Moving on, under old business, we have an airport hangar update. CAO Rayner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a brief update with some of the ferry disruptions that we've had, as the mayor mentioned in her opening remarks. Unfortunately, the day that the Adventure went down was also the day that we had a crew in Blacks Harbor ready to come over to pour the floor for the hangar. Unfortunately, that put us back two weeks. But I'm glad to say that they were in last week, Wednesday, and the floor is poured, and now the door is scheduled to arrive tomorrow. So we have our rec group and our public works group meeting the truck at the ferry to remove the railings from the ramp, because as I was told today by Margie, this is the widest load that they've ever received.
Wow.
Wow.
Just for the doors?
Just for the door.
Okay.
Yep. We have literally six inches on either side of the load.
Wow.
So everyone crossed their fingers. With that being said, once the door is installed and the cladding is put on, hopefully, knock on wood, we've anticipated that the hangar should be completed, if not to a point where the plane should be able to be in before the end of the month.
Thank you for that. Any questions or comments? And here's hoping we don't have to talk about another ferry breakdown after the 11:00 ferry tomorrow. Moving on, 10-minute open session. Seeing no one, we'll move on to new business. That would be 14-2, UMB Governance Structure and Elections. Councilor Boyd.
All right, that's me. I did hand a few things out. I will apologize that they're not, the maps are current, the board structure changed a little bit, but all this stuff was getting sent out to everybody, so if you were following along, then you know. If not, I'll try to answer any questions you might have now. So a quick spiel, the governance structure hadn't been touched at UMB for over 10 years, so I was lucky enough to get seconded to a board of directors that we decided to dig in and change our governance model. The governance model has been changed. It is now, we have a new governance bylaw. It is adopted by the board at our last board meeting, sorry, two board meetings ago. And so now we are going to be making up our new board of directors at this year's AGM in St. John in the Fall. So as you can see from the maps, originally, we had nine different zones. We were zone four and still are currently zone four, but we will now be zone five. So we changed to basically match up with the RSCs. And we also amalgamated with the Cities Association, so that brought that many more members in. And we decided to try to kind of make the board inclusive of the way the new, the way the new RSCs are all aligned. So, that being said, if you look back at the recommendation potential board structure, which actually has 17, it will only be 16. The last email that would have come out to everybody calling for nominations for the board of directors, so the Northwest, Restagu, Shalor, Mayor Mashie, Kent, Kings, Fundy, Southwest, and Western Valley will each have one rep. The Capital Region will have two, and Southeast will have three. So nominations for those positions are open until August 21st. You can nominate through council, and we can send it up the line. We are still currently zone four, so myself and Councilor Wade Greenlaw in St. Stephen are the current zone reps. I have not, I don't believe I will be letting my name stand as a board of director at this time, and I don't think Wade is either, so they'll be looking for someone new. And as you can see, our zone has got a fair amount bigger now. So that's that on the governance side. So if you know somebody, if you yourself want to nominate somebody, if you would like to be nominated or let your name stand, let myself or Wade Greenlaw know, and we will move your name up through. The actual election will be at the AGM on October 5th. So there will be new board, there will be new executive. We will hopefully still have our current president because she's doing an excellent job, and I believe she's letting her name stand as well. That's Mayor Maryfield in Grand Bay. And so that's that as far as the new zones and the election of members goes. Are there any questions on that?
You might have said this, but can I just ask for a clarification?
Sure can.
My understanding is that while our zone has three board members, one would be from essentially the RSC 10 area. Is, that is correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So from, yeah, from the eight communities, seven communities are there.
Yep.
Perfect.
That's correct.
Okay.
Excellent question. I did not say that. Good catch.
Thank you. I try to pay attention once in a while.
Listen. Hey, my notebook. So, yeah, so is there any other questions on the governance? It was just kind of a fast and hot presentation there, but I do have all the stuff you can go through. Stuff's been sent down all along, and we can dig back through emails if you happen to accidentally delete it, as sometimes I do. Moving on from that, we need to send a resolution in to UMB. They're asking, we're asking, which hat am I wearing? UMB is asking for us to have actually designated people to vote on any zone business. So at the AGM, anybody that's been at the AGM is familiar with that. We vote on all our resolutions at the last day of the conference, on Sunday afternoon. We want to have on record in our bylaws who is allowed to vote from what community. So there is a little draft resolution. I think you guys all got it. So basically, we need to pick two people. UMB would prefer the first person to be the mayor of the community, and then the second can be the deputy or a designate that anybody finds. So that being said, I would nominate the mayor to be our first vote, and I'm open to any other names that would like to be the second vote.
I'm pretty familiar with the process, and I attended AGM every year, so I wouldn't mind letting my name stand second to the mayor.
Sure.
If council is fine with that.
That was going to be my question. Is anybody besides Councilor Sturgeon planning on attending the AGM? Because I'm not 100% sure I am, so it may make sense to, I mean, I don't mind having the vote like on virtual meetings, but if I'm not there, it makes more sense that we nominate maybe the two people who are going, and then if one or the other doesn't make it, at least we've covered off the people who we believe may be in attendance.
Sure, yeah.
Does that make sense?
It does, yeah. And this is, the names of every community is likely going to change in the spring, depending on who runs where. That was one of the, we weren't really into this as a board, but our legal department thought it was a good thing to do. So now we're going to do it, and we're going to designate names, and it's going to take effect this fall. And dependent on who runs where all over the province in the spring, councils may have to do this again in June. So I'm good with leaving my name. If Council Sturgeon, if anybody else would rather, I don't mind either, because I've got 100 things going on at the AGM in my other roles, but I'm good with leaving it too. So if everybody's good with that, then we can make that a motion. Everybody?
Is that a resolution I hear you making?
It sure is. It sure is.
Go ahead and make your resolution then, sir.
All right. So, I guess it's right here in front of me.
Because I believe you have specific wording they need, so that's why I'm putting you on the spot.
I do. Well, we just kind of form-lettered it. So be it resolved that the council of Grammonan hereby resolves that Daniel Boyd be appointed as the voting member at meetings at the Union of Municipalities of the Province of New Brunswick with Councilor Wayne Sturgeon appointed as the alternate voting member.
Heard the motion. Do we have a seconder?
Oh.
Seconded by Councilor Green. Question? Council Sturgeon?
Just one question. You're still a member of the executive?
I am currently still zone and executive member. I may not be at the AGM, but I currently am, up until October.
I know that being passed executive before, as a, as president or as president or treasurer or whatever, you have an individual vote.
That's right.
And then, so would you vote if you were the primary, would you be the, would you vote twice basically, or would that fall to me, I guess, since I'm the person that's the?
Yeah, it would fall to you.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried.
And one more thing on that. You all get this handy-dandy, very colorful and fancy resolution guide. And again, this is stuff that's come down through, you can go through and you can see, so for those not familiar, the way UMB operates is by the resolutions. So the resolutions that are voted through the AGM in the fall is what gives staff direction for the next year and what to lobby our provincial government, and sometimes the federal government for. So you go back through there and look and see what's what and what open resolutions are. It gives you all guidelines for drafting a resolution. Resolutions are due at the end of this month. I'm currently working with our resolution guru, Amy Anderson, from Whitstock on a couple. So the way the resolutions work, they have to come to council to be ratified, and then if they make it past council, then they go to the zone. They make it past the zone, they come to me and my committee on the executive table to see if they make it to the AGM. So I don't have the final wording and everything for the resolutions. It may require a special meeting, but currently we're working on a resolution to allow businesses, small businesses, access to, what is it, the New Brunswick Tax Initiative Credit for Housing. Currently, they can't use that money for housing developments, so we're looking to make an amendment so that small businesses can access that funding. And also, the mayor brought up a good point, and it's come up at other municipalities in the zone as well. And we all know how little we've had to say about the project in Northhead. So we're looking to possibly make a resolution asking at the federal level through the Federation of municipalities in Canada and also at the provincial level, allowing municipalities to have a little bit more say in the projects that are awarded in our backyards, just so we can maybe prevent or at the very least prepare for issues. And this is not just us that happens, and that's, of course, how UMB works. It's for the benefit of all the municipalities. But a lot of times, this is how it happens. Something happens in somebody's backyard, make a resolution, and we fight to fix that so it doesn't happen again. So when those are done, I'll send them around for everybody to read and potentially have to have a quick in-person meeting before the 31st of July. So that's all I've got with my UMB hat. If there's any questions to that, I can take some, or we can just keep moving on.
Questions or comments? Okay. Thanks, Dan. 14-3, Grammonan Library Letter of Support. Councilor Sturgeon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, recently I have been chosen by my fellow counselors to be council's representative on the local library board. It's a position I had before, and it was a position that I served with passion before, because it's a library, most of us think is just a place to borrow a book, or maybe some other material, video, such as like that. But they got so many programs on the go, especially about helping people who struggle to read in particular. And let's face it, if you struggle to read, you struggle to learn. And we have, we've all heard over the last months, the spring, there was a discussion on local school boards made cuts to libraries, and of course, they had to, you know, let go of staff and such. The first time it happened was Anglo West, and I wasn't quite sure where we were in that. I know, Madam Mayor, you expressed concern with that as well. What did it affect us? And thankfully, it didn't affect us. But still, it affected them, and, you know, that's a big deal. And then, you know, there was, some cuts came into Anglo South. Thankfully, Madam Mayor, it doesn't affect our library here, thankfully. But, Madam Mayor, I'm still very concerned. And this is not, I want, everybody knows my politics, and that's, you know, that's no big secret. But really, on a matter like this, this is no time for colors or anything like that. It's, I believe that the Minister of Education has some good, you know, she wants to do some good things. I believe her intentions are great, and I also believe that, yes, this is a, when cuts are made, local school boards, that that's, the school board does do it. But in the end, the minister is the one who signs off on things. And I would, I would like to, for our council, and to send a litter of not criticism for things that have gone on with library boards in the rest of the province, but rather an enlightenment about how important that the library programs are. And I have witnessed firsthand a child that struggled to read and as a result, struggled to learn. But because of programs at the library, not only did that child get to read better, but loved to read, and as a result, loved to learn. Madam Mayor, it depends on who you want to talk to. Province of New Brunswick struggles with a literacy rate between 20 and 40%. Most of those people hide it very well. But when it comes down to times when they have to write a test or anything like that, which sometimes I have to offer to people, you know, talking to them in the course and the class and such, they know their stuff. But when it actually comes down to writing it on paper, they struggle a bit. And it's not because they're stupid or anything, nothing like that at all. It's just that they struggle to read. And I, this would like for our council to just write a letter of enlightenment, I would say, to the Minister of Education, and also to be carbon copied to the Premier Holt, and also to our, of course, our local MLA, just to say that, you know, these decisions, just make sure that they don't affect programs at the library, because they offer, like I said, much more than just writing, lending a book out or some other material. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So do you want to put that into a motion form?
Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we send a litter of concern and enlightenment to the Minister of Education and carbon copy to Premier Holt and our local MLA about cuts to library programs in the province as a whole, and just to ensure that that doesn't happen for the upcoming school year. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You heard the motion. Do we have a seconder?
Oh, I'll say.
Seconded by Councilor Green. Question? Comments? Council Green.
Sorry. You told us, and I forgot. I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. I would think in that letter, we should try to get some current stats from our library. Like, they gave us a report every year, how many kids, how many programs from like last year, and what they have for up-to-date this year, just so that we can show that for a community of 2,500 and some people, you know, how big a piece it is of our community.
Madam Mayor, I think that's an excellent suggestion by Councilor Green, and that more information we, to back up our concern, the better it is.
Anyone else? Councilor Boyd.
So just to confirm, there's not currently any talks in cutting any of our library service? Is that?
Not on the item.
Okay.
Anyone else? Councilor Ballantyne.
It's a question. I just wondered, my impression was that the cuts to other library programs are the libraries that are operated by schools, and our library isn't.
No, that's why we're not, that's why it doesn't affect us specifically. But yet, but I think we can all agree, and we certainly know that, education goes beyond the classroom in order for it to work well.
Yes, and I agree with that. I agree with the points you made. I mean, I love our library, and I would hate to see anything happen to it.
Anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. All right. Moving on to item number 17, approval to pay invoices from the General Operating Fund. Dexter Machining for the Kubota tractor, $2,846.47. Dexter Machining for the Fire Department Trash Pumps, $1,883.93. Dutchman Contracting for DTI, the gravel, $1,725. Island Truck Repair for the Transfer Station Packer Truck, $2,144.52. Island Truck Repair for the Transfer Station Packer Truck, $9,082.81. McGinnis-Cooper Legal, $4,076.24. Michael Green Electrical for the Generator, $14,612.89. Sullivan Sales and Service for the Transfer Station Forklift, $1,933.28. Waterfront Fabricating for DTI, the Trailer Hitch, it's $1,604.55. Home Hardware, the June Statement is $4,501.28.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to pay the invoices of the General Operating Fund as read.
You heard the motion from Councilor Sturgeon. Do we have a seconder?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Councilor Greenlaw. Question?
Yes. The Transfer Station Packer Truck, what were those repairs, actually?
It's a quote that Trish did for us a couple meetings ago. They had.
Yeah, I don't know.
You know, that's substantially more than what was quoted. I thought, I was wondering what else broke on the truck or whatever.
I've got the quote here. Quote was for 10-5, so it is about $1,000 more.
The one I had was for 76.
Oh, I have it right here. Tell me she passed it at the meeting.
Okay. I just didn't, I'll get a copy of that one, I guess. Thank you.
Anything else? I'll wait and make, okay. Council Green, you're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that you were, yeah.
I was doing some filing on the weekend, and that one fell on the floor, the quote we got from March. And just looked at that and said, that's substantially more of what, I didn't realize there was a second quote. Sorry.
No, no worries.
There was a second quote, because there was a second problem after the initial.
Something else happened.
Yeah, something else happened. It wouldn't start. And so that's why there was a second.
But no, that is, basically, it would have been a second quote. That's an invoice you showed.
No, this is the quote that I showed you.
So there was a second quote. It just, no.
Okay. So we're, okay?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. From the General Capital Fund for Brunswick Engineering Airport Extension, $39,905. And from Lindsay Construction Progress, Claim Number Nine,
I move that we pay those invoices from the General Capital Fund.
You heard the motion from Councilor Ballantyne. Do we have a seconder?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Boyd. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 18-1 is a transfer from, transfer 2000, okay, I'm going to start this over. 18-1 is for a motion to transfer to 18-1 is for a motion to transfer $201,722.30 from the airport line of credit to the General Capital Fund.
I make that motion.
Heard the motion from Councilor Greenlaw. Do we have a secondere?
Second.
Second by Councilor Ballantyne, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. I always am worried I'm going to screw up a number, and I'm amazed it took that long. So for closed session, we have five items. 19-1 is property, surplus property. 19-2, legal, a dog issue. 19-3, legal, Northhead Wharf. 19-4 was property for the BGC expansion, and 19-5 is the PAC discussion.
Make a motion that we go into closed session.
Heard the motion from Councilor Greenlaw. Do we have a secondere?
Second.
Second by Councilor Ballantyne, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? I'll recall this regular council meeting, the village of Grand Manan order, we were in closed session to talk about five things. I'm going to suggest that the update on the Northhead Wharf project be done first, and then we'll roll through the last of them, so I'm going to turn this over to Councilor Green, and I'll step out.
Okay, we're getting, we were given some legal opinions on the Northhead Wharf project, and it was council's decision to continue with the plan we had last month for the CAO to continue working to get things done. That's it? Okay, Mayor can come back.
Thank you for that. So the other items was, the next one would be property. We have a piece of surplus property.
Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion with the, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion with the surplus property, that we ask the sole person that was interested to pay for the legal registration on all costs.
You heard the motion from Councilor Sturgeon. Do we have a secondere? Second by Councilor Boyd, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. The next one was legal with a dog issue, and I believe we were following up with our lawyer, and we'll proceed with the instructions that we have for her. That's correct? 19-4 was property, Boys and BGC expansion. I believe we're going to look into some potential funding alternatives, as well as set up a meeting with the board to make sure that we're all on the same page, and we have a cohesive plan going forward. And then 19-5 was PAC membership, and that was under personnel.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we have a first and a second choice, which we have discussed, and the first one would be contacted and see if they're still interested in becoming a member of the PAC, and if there's no longer any interest, then we'd go with our second choice.
You heard the motion from Councilor Sturgeon. Do we have a secondere? Second by Councilor Ballantyne, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Our next regular council meeting will be, I was going to say, it is August 4th, so it'll be August 11th, here at the Community Center, 7:30 PM. And I take a motion to adjourn, since the deputy mayor is absent.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you for that. Good night, everybody.